To me that originally with the pedestrian bridge through the DuPage mayors and managers, there was an expectation that there were going to be like three grants. The way this turned out, it was a C Mac grant and one other grant, I can't remember the acronym for it, both federal grants that were flowed through I dot. There just was not another piece left to finish to help Wooddale pay for the remainder. And I don't, I couldn't tell from.
So maybe I didn't fall asleep at that meeting, maybe I thought I heard 100% grant money for the bridge.
Yeah, there were, there were lots of, there was one report that was probably 12 pages long and it was a chronology of this bridge and how it had, what had been brought to council and when it had been discussed and, and what was proposed and what was submitted for grants. So it seems to me that there were many efforts made to get more coverage as far as the cost go. But as it ultimately turned out, there were just these two and I dot administered both, but they were federal dollars and so that's how it went.
Thank you, that's for information only. Next is the report recommendation on the dial ride. We got a memo earlier, like two weeks ago in our packet regarding some of the concerns about the dial ride bus program and liability for transporting of individual to and from school. That was just the city manager doing a quality job of keeping everybody informed. We have a schedule here showing dial ride program is certainly not supposed to be a moneymaker. It is a service we provide for the residents. So there is absolutely, in my opinion, no expectation to ever make money on this. In fact, right now we're losing consistently, you know, $2,000 to $5,000, you know, per year on this, which actually I don't even think is that bad for a service like this that we're providing to the residents. The recommendation is because of downtime is to change the hours and have the hours of operation be from nine to 2:30 with no early pickups and increase the cost for rides by a dollar. So at $3 per ride for seniors and disabled individuals and $4 for everybody else. Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add?
Just that in summary, our dial ride program would kind of mirror the township program. And we had looked at this before as far as getting our, our costs. It's still a, a very good deal for our residents. We still do subsidize this quite a bit. And we are going to be receiving a new leased van from Pace. And we feel by adjusting these hours as a township does, it will make this more efficient and make the program overall better for the community.
And I think what the goal is is to try to mold the riders, that it's not like a taxi service, they can call anytime, is to mold them to make their trips according to our schedule so we can run it as efficiently as possible. I, I don't want to belabor the point too much, but with respect to the individual we are driving to and from school, I was a little bit confused because that is a ultimately a very difficult call to make. Why was the opinion of Irma that they would, we would, they would not cover if that individual was involved in an accident with that bus? Is it because that bus is not equipped to take a handicapped person or we're going beyond our scope of services?
The, the van has a chairlift. However, there are specialized services involved in a, in a to and from type of situation on a daily basis. Usually that transportation is provided by a special bus. And there are funding, there is funding available through the state, through the school for that type of service. And that basically it was started because we, when we first looked at this program, according to documents I have read and have been submitted to me, they put in a chairlift in the original van to see if there was going to be a need for it. And since it was available, the one particular individual took advantage of, of this, this type of a service. It's not usually done in, in this type of a, of a, with this type of a van because of the size of the vehicle. This puts unfortunately the city in a, in a bad position. In the event there is an accident involving this type of thing, of course, we'd be liable anyway. But with, with this type of back and forth on a regular basis delivery service, it increases the, the liability. And basically there, the school district, that is their duty and responsibility in regard to transportation.
Right. And I think that's the biggest part of it, the school district, that is their responsibility. Any questions? Now I'd make a motion to approve the modifications of the hours of operation for dial ride service from nine AM to 2:30. And that's five days a week, correct?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, yes, Alderman, Wesley.
Is that the increasing of fees still?
I'll do that in a separate motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'd make a motion to increase the rider fee to be $3 per ride for seniors and disabled riders and $4 for all other riders. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Again, it's just a reflection of the increasing cost to run the bus service. It's still being subsidized by all the residents. Motion, is there a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Two oppositions, motion carries.
I got curious, I was hoping a senior vehicle sticker should take away all the costs.
Next item is the report recommendation, South Plant conveyor equipment purchase. Make a motion to approve the purchase of the South Plant conveyor equipment to dry down equipment in the amount of $63,338. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, no comment, there's only one bid received, but it's customized, specialized equipment, not a lot of people in the industry. So motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the, basically a procedure for the installation of traffic calming measures. Gary basically kind of memorialized that the position that we have been doing with respect to residents that want to have speed bumps installed. And then Gary left out is the fight of whether or not the residents get the old ones or the new ones. And I think I'm keeping track, I think the third ward always seems to get the new speed bumps and the first ward always gets the older speed bumps. My only question, Gary, is you said you want to do the same for Windsor Avenue. Windsor has had the temporaries for, I think it's three years running and we've had very positive response. That's from Cedar to Manchos and, or Cedar to Central. Those residents are ready to have them installed on a permanent basis. And so I don't know how much, if that kind of money we have in the budget to install them on a permanent basis on Windsor, but I was going to suggest we actually send a letter out and have one more meeting with the residents with Joe and I to go over the permanent installation on Windsor Avenue for the speed bumps. Do we have the money in the budget for that or?
Yes, we certainly can find money in the budget for that.
Okay. Because the other place, the townhomes, Carrier is supposed to install permanent speed bump on the one area exiting that for traffic calming also. Alderman, Toleme?
Yeah, here's part, here's a problem though. Some of the residents, okay, you know, like if we go with this policy, some of the residents, they want the speed bumps or the temporary speed bumps really only in the summer months. They don't want the, I mean, even after three years, they don't want permanent speed bumps because they don't want them in the wintertime. You know, they don't want them in the wintertime. So, I mean, I know like on Walnut, for example, if, if we were to put them in permanent, those people would go ballistic. And they, they're not opposed, I mean, they're not opposed to putting in the temporary ones for the summer months, but they don't feel that there's a need in the wintertime. So.
I, I think the approach you need to take there is, there's only so many we have to install and it's okay if no other ward or no other street has requested them to put them, like Windsor's had them three years in a row because there's, no one else has really requested them. But if we have large volumes of people requesting them, they have to go back, in my opinion, to the bottom of the list after they have them on a temporary basis for a couple of years.
Then, then that would be fair.
You know, or you sell them, you've had them for two years, either make the jump to permanence or you go to the bottom of the list if there's multiple streets.
I would agree with that.
Requesting them.
I would agree with that.
So, I don't think that needs to be in there, but I think it's called LIFO, last in, first out, or FIFO, first in, first out, Maggie, right? So, any other questions or comments? Always, I make a motion to approve the procedures for installation of traffic calming measures as provided in the memorandum of Gary Holm dated June 2nd, 2006. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question.
I just want to make sure, I mean, if we're going to prove this procedure here tonight, that that is taken into consideration. I mean, like I said, I know I've talked with the residents on Walnut, they don't want the permanent ones, but they want, they want the temporary. I mean, we did that, we did that for this year, but next year they're going to come back and want temporary ones again too. So.
Gary, can we add then a line item here that, you know, for areas that have had them for two years or more, that if there's a, another request for those, they're kind of last on the list to get them?
I will certainly do that and I, I'll maybe reiterate my one comment, how long does this go on for? I mean, are we continuing to put out the temporary ones year after year after year after year?
I, I think if it's addressing an issue that the residents have and they're satisfied with it, it's a, it's an effective traffic calming method. Mr. Manager?
Yes. With a little, a little background on this, one of the problems we have with the temporary is the wear and tear on them. You have to be installed, taken out. It, it's not cost effective. It tears up the roadway eventually and this is why we went for, you know, they would decide within a period of time whether we do it permanently. We can put the permanent ones in at a lot less cost. And it does become, it, it becomes a cost issue and a maintenance issue. That's why we would like to have, you know, decided if it's possible. Otherwise we'll continue along with however the council directs, but that was the reason why we did, we would say this is what you get because traffic calming is not seasonal. It, it is a regular type of thing.
Alderman, Canipe?
Yeah, I think a good example is the speed bumps on Harvey and for a few that are permanent year round and people have learned to live with them. And the cut through traffic, which they were partially installed to cut down, it works very effectively. And I think if people, if it were on like a certain time of year and they took them out for a period of year, then they get accustomed to speeding through again, cutting through again, and then until the spring, then they got to be reeducated or whatever. If you're going to put them in permanent, I don't think, you know, three quarters of a year, whatever, is, is really a good way to go.
Again, that being said though too, I think that there is validity to if we should have like an open call almost in the beginning of the spring where Gary says he can, you know, kind, you know, have the Alderman come forward with any streets they've gotten requests for speed bumps. And if, maybe it's a quiet year and then nobody does a request or at the ward meetings that some of the members have, everybody says, you know, we're pretty happy with our traffic in the city, we don't want any speed bumps. Then if an area, I'd rather have the temporaries up somewhere than sitting just in a storage room with nobody requesting them. Alderman, Winger?
Perhaps we should table this and take some time to come up with a cap of how many different temporary speed bumps are out each season and maybe it's 10 different sets or kind of rework this a little bit and then bring it back.
I don't think it's that crucial when it, I mean, I, I don't want Gary to spend any more, like, this is kind of a fluid thing. It's just kind of memorializing what we've been doing. I just want to get this done. Yeah, I mean, Gary, I mean.
Yeah, we currently deploy four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so nine, 18 nine footers and then nine four footers every year. So I mean, I've got all that, what we're deploying. We're currently deploying on Windsor, Cedar and Walnut. And, and the value to buy them off the shelf for all the ones that we deploy for just the bumps, not any installation or labor is approximately $2,700. And then of course there's the installation and labor and ongoing maintenance throughout the summer.
I'd never seen the new ones, again, because they're not ever in my ward, but are those easier to install and are they better long-term maintenance wise?
It's still the same, I mean, you still have to bring out the hammer, drill out there and drill the hole and sink the anchors and, and they're a different shape. The new ones are a little bit more elongated than the, than the solid, but you still have to mount them the same way.
Alderman, Wesley?
You know, Windsor's going to be taken out because they probably want regulars. So how many are you actually looking at to employ every year then? If you take Windsor totally out.
If they're approved at Windsor, if not, I'm sure.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, they approve at Windsor, put the permanent one in, how many are you actually looking at to employ?
If we eliminate Windsor and Cedar, that just leaves us with Walnut. And Walnut has three sections and each section consists of the two nine footers and one four footer, approximately $900 worth of, of new material.
Leave it go.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the memorandum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the report and recommendation for the, from the Streetscape Committee for the triangle, there's three triangles, we're trying to increase how Wooddale looks. One of them is the, what they're going to call is a Shorty's Triangle near the Wooddale Road and Irving. The other one is the Christie's Triangle and the last one is the Freedom Triangle. Originally Streetscape Committee presented us with, some would call them specifications, some would call them conceptual drawings as to what they wanted to go in, in those locations. City Council liked those ideas. Sue Creedy gave a presentation that night and said how we need to go, go, go and get these in right away, which I do agree with that attitude to move as quickly as possible so long as it's done at the right time of the year. As far as water, there is the ability to have water installed at all these locations. I talked to Mr. Holm, water to install it at the Christie's location is probably a minimum of a 30 day project.
Can't be done at their location. Cannot be done on their location.
Yeah, I had two issues. Number one, yeah, it, it physically could be done, but the reason why I said 30 days is because the water mains on the other side of Irving Park Road. So we'd have to physically auger underneath Irving Park Road, excavate, close a lane down on Irving Park Road. It's not a simple, just, just go out there and install a pipe.
No, what I'm trying to say is that land is contaminated. I don't think we could do anything with that land. There was a gas station there and we cannot touch, put anything in on that property, EPA.
And then item number two, the reason why is that then put drought tolerant plants in there. And then the planting plan called for drought tolerant plants that didn't require a formal irrigation system, so.
Okay, then historically whenever I've seen us used, I don't care what you call them, but plantings in areas that don't have a, a formal irrigation system, they've struggled. Not all of them, but you know, that would be my concern. My other concern on this is that we did a request for proposals. I viewed, well, what we got from the Streetscape Committee is specifications. They identified what plants they wanted to go in to those, those locations. So in my opinion, we should have done a request for bids. If we wanted proposals, we should have said to each of these places we sent out, we have $50,000 to spend, please give us, come back with your best proposal, like we did with the train station and come up with their conceptual ideas. Instead, we sent out proposals, request for proposals, and we got one from the great state of Wisconsin to respond. And they came in at $150 less than the proposed bid amount. I'm sorry, yeah, proposed budget was $50,000, they came in at $49,693.80. I understand that they actually, at the direction of the committee, deviated from the original plans because when the original plans were informally requested for proposals, those were going to be over $100,000. So now we're faced with, as a committee of awarding a bid to Water, Wood and Stone LLC of Wisconsin for this contract for $49,000 and some change, which is going to be different than the conceptual plans we originally approved. Again, I still support this project, but I do strongly support the bid process. I think we have enough specifications where we could have went out for bid and quite honestly, I was disappointed that we didn't use all the, there's probably 500 landscapers between here and the lovely Wisconsin border. And we were fortunate enough not to send it out to some of our chamber members, including ones who have donated trees to the city of Wooddale in the past. So that was a little bit disappointing to me. Jeff, any, you want to respond or comments? This was your memo, so.
Well, as you covered already, the area is dealing with three separate, three separate triangles. It's Streetscape felt was important to get done, was a priority. If you go out to these sites right now, at one site you've got multiple trees with missing tops right next to Shorty's Restaurant. You've got a Wooddale, a new Wooddale sign that's covered by three foot native grasses so you can't even see the Wooddale sign. On the other site you have a.
Those are prairie grasses that we actually planted, but I agree the locations.
They do cover the sign.
Suspect, right.
In another site you've got a Freedom Bell that's misplaced that probably should be moved down the road a little bit. It's kind of isolated there on an island. And on the other site next to the soon to be newly renovated train station, you have a barren site of, you have a barren strip of land there. So Streetscape felt that was important to make a priority. If you want, if you want me to run, if you want me to run over a brief timeline of the RFP proposal, I could do that for you.
No, I don't need that. I, I do like that, I know the city manager and you checked some background with respect to this Wisconsin company, they have done work in Hinsdale, they've done work in Crystal Lake, they've done work in Wisconsin, so, you know, and they've had, Hinsdale had no problems with them, they said they did a great job. So again, my concern is just that we're, for the timing of this thing, if, if we're not going to do water at the pride, at the location for Christie's, that's a concern because I don't think it will last, even though they're drought tolerant plants. Number two is I think that now we're looking at starting this in July. And I don't know any landscaper that would recommend to the city that we should be doing plantings in July. I want to get this done as much as anybody else, but is it really going to get lost if we send out for bid and plant them in the fall? You know? Mr. Manager?
Yes, just, just to go back and, and go over this a little bit, Streetscape Committee knew that the timeline was critical on this. We did the request for proposal in-house, it was reviewed by our city engineer and we, we felt comfortable with that. We didn't get the, some of the local people to bid on it for several reasons, some people said they were too busy. And if we were going to get this done and we did want it started, because the original concept plans can't be completed with the smaller budget that we had. We thought we'd get it started and also clean up, as the assistant had said, some of the, some of the issues there and get, get it started so that we could move ahead on this. We did, rather than just clean it up without planning anything, that would be a problem. They, they can get this done within a reasonable time period. We just did a similar, not a similar, but we did the gardens on, on the other side of town, we did put in the drip system. We're trying to do this in a cost effective manner and we can, if it's a desire of council, do this over again in the fall. However, it, it will kind of push everything back again and so this has to be done in phases. We won't be able to do it. We knew with the conceptual plan we have included a fountain and this type of thing, that we'd have to get it going. Just like last year, Streetscape, at the end of the year, it was fall, we had some money left, we did, we tried to get some trees in. So we're doing this in piecemeal, we're trying to keep the costs down and that's the reason why, you know, it, it's coming before you in a rush. But the vendor said they could do it, they could get it in, they would be starting as soon as next week if this was approved. And city, or, yeah, city services has already gone to some of the sites and is ready to start working on some of these. As a matter of fact, they were ready to move the Freedom Bell down to where it should be and remove the flagpoles to get it going. So it, it's up to the, the committee at this point which want to do with it.
I understand they can start in a week, but if, I mean, I don't know, it's going to take at least a week, according to Gary, maybe longer to get the water, at least in those two locations. And I'm assuming we have to have the water installed before any of the plantings. Alderman, Toleme?
Yeah, my, my question is, is there some kind of a guarantee? I mean, on, on the plantings? Because I, I would agree, I mean, the later you get into, you know, like into the summer months, I mean, you really don't want to be planting trees. You know, I'm not an arborist, but I know you plant trees April, May, and then September and October. Those, those are the months you plant trees.
We, we did have our own local person, Sue Grady, go over all this and assure us that this could work and could be done. Most of the.
No offense, but is it her, it's not her $50,000, it's the city's $50,000. And, and if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe Sue is an arborist, so, yeah, I, I would just, I'm just concerned that, again, and I mean, I think she's done a great job, you know, and she doesn't even live in the city. And I think she's been great in what she's done for the city. But, you know, my question and concern is, you know, we, if we, even if we do this tonight, I mean, what kind of guarantee do we have or warranty do we have on these plants? I mean, I'll give you a great example. I've had two trees that the city has put in, that the city has put in along the creek by my house. Both trees died, okay? Neither one, neither, neither tree ever took, okay? I mean, I have this dead stick in the back of my yard. My neighbor does as well, okay? Twice now they've been replaced. What kind of guarantee? You know what I mean? If you're going to spend a kind of money, you want to make sure that, that there is some kind of a guarantee, that they're not going to just go away and die.
Mr. Manager?
Oh yeah, the, the guarantee is your normal guarantee, I believe it's one year. We're not, I don't believe planting any big major trees or anything like that at this time. It would just be the first, the first phase and we would probably be looking to add on next spring as well or possibly fall and anyhow depending upon availability of funding.
Again, I'm not, it, it's a great project and it needs to get done. We see, we did when I was on the previous, previously on the Streetscape with Alderman Canipe and Alderman Shawkey, you know, we approved the, by 711 there and that actually is looking better and better each year because it takes time, but that was planted in the fall. We actually did stuff by the triangle piece, one of these, and actually the Freedom Triangle that got installed there and got mowed over and misunderstood for weeds or whatever. We did the clock garden and that, you know, was planted in the fall and, and that's looking great and Sue does a great job assisting us with that. So again, it's not, I'm not, I'm not knocking the project, I'm just, my concern is, you know, what's the rush? We have the money in the budget, why not send it out for bids, sealed bids? Because I get a little concerned about doing a request for proposals when we have specifications. We should now take these specifications because they've changed some of the plantings, they've gone from pavers to mulch, they've removed some of the benches with the assistance of the committee. But I don't know if all the plant specifications are the same. We now have specifications, we should send this out for bid and say, this is what we want and see what kind of responses we get. We sent out the seven people, we got one, one response. Alderman, Wesley?
I believe the only thing that changed on the plan, if I am mistaken that I attended the meeting, is that we took out the benches and the trash cans and we took out the paper bricks and we took out the grass and put mulch there. It's the only thing that was changed on this plan, no plantings were changed. The plantings that are proposed here did not change, we went with those. So I mean, here we sent seven out, two of them are from Wooddale. And I mean, how many do you want to send out?
I, I want to send them out as bids and they're sealed and it doesn't say, Dunham and we have a million bucks to spend on roads this year, send us back a proposal of how much, you know, can you get done for us? And they come in at $999,000. We tell them, these are the specifications, this is what we want, this is what we want it to look like, this is where you're going to plant them, we're doing the water, we're doing this, this is all you're doing, how much are you going to do it for? That is the competitive bid process. There's no reason that this went out for, that I've heard yet, a request for proposals. Request for proposals is when you're asking for ideas or professional services or ideas from the contractor as opposed to installation. Mr. Wesley?
Well, explain the proposal and then explain the bid, because you know what? We have sat here and we had sent something out for proposal and it came across here and we passed it and we didn't send stuff out for bid.
For what?
What about the train station? We sent out for proposal for engineering.
We sent out proposal, we did a request.
But not for bid.
Yeah, because we sent, exactly. Because we sent out a request for proposals for the train station because we had no idea what the hell we wanted them to do. So we said, we're not architects, we're not experts, we, these are some of the conceptual ideas we want. We'd like a coffee shop, we'd like people to be able to go to the bathroom, we'd like the prairie style. And then we said to the professionals, you tell us what you think you can put there. And then they came back with different drawings and different ideas and said, this is what we can do and this is how much money these cost. We gave them parameters to start with. I think this is a little bit different. We already started with specifications. If we said, we have three triangle pieces and we just want to come up with the best plan for these triangle pieces and we have this much money to spend and these are the parameters we want, here we want drought tolerant, this and that, we paid the girl 700 bucks for the plan she did. And in effect, we didn't really use them because we didn't, we didn't have them bid on those plans. So that's the difference in my opinion. So that's the difference, in my opinion, on a request for proposal and on a, uh, bid specifications. Mr. Mayor?
Um, this is the one and only project Streetscape is recommending for this year. Uh, we have talked to Gus, uh, who has offered to drag his hoses overland and he's going to water the plants in the triangle. If we plant it, then he's going to go ahead and maintain it. Um, we have two master gardeners who are volunteering their time on the committee. Uh, both of them are satisfied we can get this project in this year, get it done this season. There will be no harm, uh, to the plants. It's going to be guaranteed, uh, for one year. Uh, normally I would agree with you on going out for the bid project, but if we're going to do that, we are going to lose this project for this year.
How would we lose it for this year if we go out? I mean, I'm talking about, I'm not waiting for next, I'm talking about going out for bid. We go out in August, send it out and say, get us your responses. We can go out August first, say, give us your responses September one, because we want the project to start, you know, September thirtieth.
And that's exactly the problem. We would like to have this done and enjoy this this year. And then the committee wants to go on to a new project for next year.
Do you know how that stuff looks when they originally planted? It, typically, it takes a season to even have it look good. Alderman Wesley?
All right, well, then the problem is, then everything's pretty much, all these plants may be picked over already and then we won't get anything at all. Okay, so if you're going, if you're asking to go out for proposal now, then you might as well do it next year when we got fresh stuff where we can pick from. Right now, these plants are available that we picked here for this. If you guys don't want to do it, then I don't think we should do it in the fall then, because there ain't going to be anything left out there to pick that we want.
Quite honestly, I, I don't know with respect to the quantities of the plants and when they're going to be available, if, if they're all going to be the spring. I agree at like, some of the great businesses like the Jewel, that when you go early in the year, that, you know, yeah, you get the, the, there's more selection. But I also know, early in the year, sometimes the cost is higher. And maybe some of these things like barberry bushes, there's enough of them go around that come fall, we actually get more of them for cheaper, so maybe we can get more for our money. Mr. Jeff Mers?
Um, from personal experience with the last Streetscape project, I can't tell you when we did plant those maple trees out in the corridor area, that they do have a limited selection at that time of year. So you're picking from the.
Point well taken, Mr. Wesley. We'll give you one. Alderman Toleme?
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's all well and good, but you know, there's a, there's a much bigger issue here, guys. We're, we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars on those triangles. And you know what? If the road project, if, if the road project, the intersection project goes, you just threw fifty thousand dollars away. Well, I'm sorry, but I don't agree, they don't affect them. The, the area is going to be torn to smithereens if either, either plan, okay, for, for that intersection, those, both those triangles will be taken apart. They will. I mean, there's no question. And, and I, I'm just throwing it out, you know? You want to spend fifty, why don't, why aren't we dealing with another part of the city, you know, like, uh, we're, we're, you know, further down? Uh, you know, like in front of, uh, what a good example, in front of Georgetown. Why aren't we doing something over there? I mean, you, you know, it's like, you know, we sat here a little bit earlier, we were talking about the bike bridge and we're talking about the, the, the bike path and how much money we spent or squandered, uh, whichever way you want to look at it. And, you know, I guess, I don't want to be sitting here or the next council or council, you know, in the future, sitting here and saying, what the hell were those guys thinking of? What were those people thinking of? You know, why'd you spend all that money? You know?
And again, now we're hearing that the original, I liked these projects when it was shown to us, fifty grand for those three. My understanding that they said, it's going to be in excess of a hundred thousand. Uh, maybe those three areas need to be, you know, at a hundred, maybe it's not that great. And if I'm here and we're going to spend fifty this year, because we want to make sure next year, you know, do we have any idea from the Streetscape Committee of how much these, until they're done, they're really going to cost? Yes, Jeff?
Just to respond to Alderman Toleme's comment, um, we are, the city is looking at, uh, those areas by Georgetown with that one point three million dollar grant. And we're still waiting to hear back on that, but we do have a prelim, preliminary plan on that as well.
Alderman Wesley?
Dave, we sat up here and we presented this to the city council before. Now all of a sudden, now it's coming back out saying, why do anything with those triangles? No one made a big issue when we presented those triangles to the council for approval, okay?
You know why? Because you said, we can get these three done for fifty grand. And guess what?
And that's what they're proposing, fifty grand.
It's changed. It's not the same one that's up there on the board.
But no one said anything about that we would lose those triangles when we propose it. You know, you.
I mean, common sense, okay, should, should have told everybody in this council, I mean, you know, that, and when you're looking at this, and, and don't say nobody, because I did bring it up, okay, about that intersection. I've been bringing it up for, I don't know how many years now, okay? The point is, if in fact, and when that goes, you're going to have it. So do you invest the money? I mean, here, here's my take. If you can invest the money and if those sites are touched, okay, I mean, because of the intersection, can we transplant? Can that stuff be transplanted and held in another area until, you know, and brought back at a later date? Can anybody appear answer that? I bet I could. And, and I would say for the most part, if, if it was done right, yeah, you'd probably get away with the majority of it.
I'll actually propose, before I hear from the mayor, a compromise. Why are we, you know, we're going to, again, we're going to jump into bed with a company that we did some background on, uh, from Wisconsin. Uh, and we're talking about three triangles. Why not just pick one? I agree, maybe we're going to get the, the last pick if we do in the fall. But again, doing it next, uh, spring, it's still, it's still this year's budget. Is it that horrible? Then all of a sudden, we say, you know, we pick areas to do landscaping, we, we go out for bid and we do it in the spring? If you want to award one of the triangles, I would certainly support that. Have them back out for one triangle. Maybe it's fifteen grand, we could see how well they do. And we can ask them these questions, we can have them come here and we can say, you know, how about the fall? Are you going to have any plants available? We can actually test the waters a little bit with the, uh, company. And then if we want to give them the rest of the projects in the fall, so be it. Or next spring if they recommend it. Or God forbid, we actually, we go out for bid next spring for the other two. So that would be a compromise, I would support one of the triangles. But sometimes it's like, we allocate money, it's like, oh my God, let's, we, we got to spend it, you know? We got to get it, we got to do it. And, uh, some things do need to be planned out. Maybe I've been up here too long. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Uh, the answer to Dave's, uh, Toleme's question is, from the master gardeners again, is yes, they can be transplanted, because we did discuss, uh, the possibility of the grade separation and that would have, uh, the effect on the triangles. Uh, also, I think the answer is yes, we do go forward regardless of the grade separation. And I think we've already made that decision when we did the, um, prairie style lighting, that we can't sit back and do nothing in our community, just waiting for the grade separation to ha, happen. Our business community can't do that and we can't do that as a city. Uh, we need to move forward and where we can make improvements, I think we need to go ahead and do it.
Quite honestly, on, on the three of them, the one I think should be done first is the one at Shorty's Triangle. I think that one has the most exposure, uh, for the city. And, um, so, but I did make their, uh, representation to Streetscape, that they could go straight to council, so I don't want to stop them here. Uh, just to keep it alive, we'll make a motion to approve the three triangle pieces that amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty cents to Water, Wood and Stone LLC. My guess is a Wisconsin limited liability company located in Genoa City, Wisconsin. Is there a second?
Second.
My other comment is, I'm not supporting this project, but I will support giving these guys the opportunity to do one of the triangles if the Streetscape Committee so wants that. Uh, we'll do a roll call on this one, Eileen. So exciting.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Toleme? Alderman Subak?
No.
Alderman Coles? Alderman Knype?
No.
Uh, that motion fails. Maybe between now and the committee, uh, council next week, if you can go back to Streetscape Committee and they can pick out one, I will, uh, support, uh, doing one of the triangles with this company. Next are items for, uh, future meetings. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the Ethan Woods Basin, uh, status.
Uh, per council's direction from last week, uh, we did contact the developer on Friday to direct him to come out and pump down that basin. Uh, told him that he needed to be out there, you know, first thing Monday morning. If he wasn't going to be, uh, we were. Um, he failed to show up on Monday. And first thing Tuesday morning, we were out there with our pumps pumping all day. He finally showed up on Tuesday afternoon. And Wednesday morning, we pulled out, because he, he came back a second day and has been pumping out there ever since. So the pond is currently being pumped, um, you know, in an effort to get all the water out of it.
And again, as an alternative, i- if, if it gets too costly for the developer, I'm just trying to make sure we don't have a mosquito heaven. If he wants to install an aerator on a temporary basis in that large, you know, just to keep something moving over there, because a resident shouldn't have to deal with stagnant water, because there's pending litigation between the two property owners, that I'm told from the city attorney is, in lawyer's terms, is close to being resolved. They actually are circulating a settlement agreement, so it might be a moot point very soon.
And our mosquito contractor has been made aware of that and that is one of their special, uh, sites that they visit on a regular basis, so.
That's for information only, thank you Gary. Next are items for future meeting, it's the water system backup wells, the I dot MFT resolution, uh, housekeeping for nineteen ninety-six, two thousand and six, and the, uh, commuter parking lot maintenance agreement with Metro. Any other items for, uh, future consideration? Not Mc, oh, Alderman Coles?
I would like to make a, put on the agenda about the airspace over the commuter parking lot. I think it's a very good idea. I was thinking about it. I thought I'd check, get somebody to see what, uh, what's going on. I thought it'd be a good idea.
Would you want that put on, um, probably, um, planning, zoning and development?
Just, just to give, give us something, something to, uh, work on. I, I thought it might be a good idea.
With no objection, I place that with Alderman Knype's committee. It's not public works. Right. Alderman Winger?
I just want to understand, I, I didn't catch all of that, it's airspace above the.
Yes, above the park, for your park.
What does that mean?
What does that mean? The building over the park.
Oh, okay, like build up?
Yes.
Okay, well, we can talk about that, okay.
Make a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Am I in favor, say aye? Opposed, motion carries.